Good evening. The Board now reconvenes this meeting of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees in open session at 7:00 PM on June 12, 2018 at the Plano ISD Administration Building. My name is Missy Bender and I am President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. On the Board's behalf, I wish to extend a warm welcome to all who are present and to our web and video viewers. We will conduct our meeting focusing on the district's two major goals. Number one is to ensure the continued improvement in student learning and number two is to ensure the efficient use of resources. Let me start by introducing my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my left are Sarah Bonzer, Superintendent of Schools, Nancy Humphrey, Board Secretary, Trustee Tammy Richards, and Trustee Jerry Chambers. Seated to my right are Board Vice President Dr. Yoram Solomon, Trustee David Stahle, Trustee Angela Powell, and our brand-new Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and Board of Trustees Sharon Nowak. So let's welcome her for her very first meeting. Trustee Tammy Richards will offer tonight's inspirational message. Ms. Richards?
Thank you, Ms. Bender. This past week, the trustees and superintendent came together to do some important training and part of that was talking about student success and how every student should have the opportunity. We read a passage from a book that I thought was very important and very germane. I'd like to share a little of that with you. And so it's entitled "Every Child, Every School: Success for All." Every child can learn; every school can ensure the success of every child. If we truly believe that every child can learn under proper circumstances, we would be relentless in the search of those circumstances. We would use instructional methods and materials known to be capable of ensuring success for nearly all children if used with intelligence, flexibility, and fidelity. We would involve teachers in constant collaborative professional development activities to continually improve their abilities to reach every child. We would frequently assess children's performance to ensure that all students are on a path to success and to be able to respond immediately if children are not making adequate progress. If children were falling behind despite excellent instruction, we would try different instructional approaches and if necessary, we would provide them with tutors or other intensive assistance. We would involve parents in support of their children's school success. If we truly believe that all schools could ensure the success of all children, then the failing failure of even a single child would be cause for great alarm and immediate forceful intervention. It's my plea to my colleagues and the administration that we think about every single child and no child has failure while under our care. I know many of you are here for a different reason today. You're here talking about the kids often at the very top end of the spectrum, but I want to make sure that we are ensuring that every child is successful, every school, and as we consider our strategy and our budget that we make decisions in concert with that. Thank you.
Will everyone please stand and join me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance? We will use the digital flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We will now move to the recognition part of the agenda, beginning with some student special guests. Carla Oliver, Assistant Superintendent for Government, Community, and Planning Initiatives is made aware of student guests prior to this meeting. Ms. Oliver, do we have any joining us this evening?
We actually do not have any students joining us this evening for that type of recognition.
All right, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the recognition of Presidential Scholar Catherine Lee, who graduated from Plano Senior High this weekend. Catherine, would you please come to the front of the room along with Plano Senior High School Associate Principal Pam Clark? And I invite Carla Oliver to introduce this special recognition. Just join us right over here at the podium.
Thank you, and thank you Pam for being here along with our student. We're delighted to have Catherine Lee here this evening. She is the 11th Presidential Scholar from Plano ISD since the awards inception and just a little bit of research shows us that the program was created in 1964. So we're so proud to have both Catherine and Ms. Clark here with us this evening. And I'll turn it actually over to you. I don't want to steal more of the information. I bet you have some things to say as well.
We do. So of course, it's an honor to be here tonight to introduce Catherine to you. She is a Plano girl, started at Golic. They moved out of state for a few years and then she attended Haggard, Vines, and Plano Senior High School. So she's come through the Plano ISD system. She's taken a multitude of AP classes. She's competed for Plano Senior High School on the Academic Decathlon Team at the state level. She's done more than one, at least two, summer internships at UTD researching neuroscientists. She's the daughter of two scientists and so that may seem like a natural progression, but her teachers say that what makes her unique is that she always seeks to have a depth of understanding of all the material from economics to science to all of the classes she takes. Her social studies teachers have recognized her in multiple ways and they talk about her work ethic and her determination to just see the broader picture even at a young age when she was at Vines. Her social studies teacher just commented on her desire to have a global view. So of course, it is my honor to introduce her to you and I'll let you tell them about your plans going forward, okay?
I'd just like to thank Plano ISD and all of the administrators and all the teachers who made it possible for me to be where I am today. It's really been an honor to be able to work with like all my teachers and just know that I have an entire community behind me, so I'm really thankful for that. I will be attending Amherst College in the fall, so I will not be in Texas anymore. That's kind of a shame, but I know that with the education that I received from Plano Senior High School and just Plano ISD in general, that I'll be in good hands.
Congratulations.
So I also did a little bit of research on the Presidential Scholars and I thought it might be a good idea for those in the audience who don't know how you get to be a Presidential Scholar. And so each year, every state in America gets to nominate 30 male and 30 female candidates for this award and they have to meet certain requirements in order to be eligible for recommendation. So the candidates are then ranked nationwide and then they have to submit candidacy materials that include essays, self-assessments, school reports, transcripts. Catherine's smiling because she remembers having to do all of these things. And then each candidate is evaluated on their academic achievement, their personal characteristics, on the quality of the essays that they submitted, and their leadership and service activities. So it is more than academic. You have to be the whole meal deal. And Catherine was then put into a pool of 4,000 and 800 semifinalists are selected by a national committee. And then in April, they select the final 161 recipients of the Presidential Scholar. So I just wanted to kind of frame the process that Catherine has had to go through to receive this honor and I want to thank you for being such a champion for Plano ISD and I'm so proud of you and what you've accomplished. We can't wait to see what you do next, but thank you also for being a great ambassador for Plano, Texas, and our school system. So we wish you the very best, Catherine. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any comments to share? Okay, congratulations. We're very proud of you. Tammy, do you want to say? Okay. Best of luck to you. Our next recognition is one in which we are pleased to also honor Kennedy Blackman from Plano Senior High School. Dr. Yoram Solomon will be making a special presentation. And Ms. Blackman, would you please come to the front of the room with your coach, Amy DeHart?
Dodary.
Dodary, thank you. Let me tell you about Kennedy. She is the 400-meter-UIL 6A Girls Track State Champion and she is also the state runner-up in the 200-meter dash. Thanks to Kennedy and the strong team of Lady Wildcats, they took fifth overall as the team at the state championship. Yoram, would you like to make a presentation? And Coach, would you like to start us out with a few comments? And then Kennedy, would you like to make any comment?
Sure. I was actually unaware that I had to make a little comment about her. So start with, I'm gonna put Kennedy in front so you can see her. Kennedy will light up the room. She's the kind of person that you want on your team that's gonna bring personality and heart and drive and determination. And since her freshman year is when I first got her and when, actually, I first came to Plano, so we kind of walked through this journey together. She has, it's just been a progress year in and year out. Last year, she was actually a state qualifier in the 200 and got eighth. And I think ever since that race, she was determined to not let that happen again. Over the summer, she was actually a national champion through her club team and through the club circuit, so, which is pretty rare for her to come back and be a part of our team, you know, to have that honor of being a national champion already. But she came back and brought that success to us. And she ended up qualifying in the 200 and the 400. She won all of those events all year long, except for there was one race that she didn't win all year long and then we made it to state. It's definitely worth going back and watching that 53 seconds of your life because she was nowhere near the front with the last 80 meters to go. And it was hard for her. She'd been sick that week and we were just worried that she'd be able to make it. It was a hot weekend in Austin and we couldn't quite see the finish and we looked at the board, at the finish line, and it was just, we were just elated. We were just speechless, so excited for her. And most people don't know that you immediately go to the awards podium and she didn't because she had another race. So she went down and her and her teammates just basically just let her sit for a little bit and get ready because her race, her second race was about 30 minutes later. And when she, you know, soon as she stepped on the track, she was ready to go. And again, it was one of those races, we weren't really sure about the finish and we couldn't tell. And initially, she was listed as third and somebody had sent me a picture saying that she was second and we weren't quite sure. We went over to the awards and we still didn't know, she didn't know, until they told her that she had got second by one thousandth of a second. It was quite the honor to not only have one state medalist, but to come away with two. And she doesn't like wearing them and she's actually, she doesn't, I have to remind her to wear them and walk around with pride. And she's not only a state champion, but she also is a four-event record holder for us at Plano Senior High and her shoes will not be filled in the future. She left a mark and I don't think it'll ever, ever be quite filled up with the impact that she's left on, on me as a coach and has made me better and just all of her teammates. And so she'll be missed, to say the least.
Kennedy, is there anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody, all of you and my dad, mainly Coach Dodary, for everything.
So Dad, if you're here, would you like to stand?
And I'll be attending OU. Yeah, for track.
Boy, I don't know where, how you topped the track records that you've set, but we hope that those records will be there for a very long time and that you've left a legacy behind you that it will be hard for anyone to catch. So congratulations and good luck to you and your career at OU. They're lucky to have you.
Indeed. In addition to our, the students that we've recognized thus far, we would like to also recognize more high-achieving students. And in just a moment, you will see their names in the scrolling PowerPoint. I'm gonna, in case you can't see them, I'm gonna read them to you. And if you happen to be here and amongst the names that I'm reading, please stand. We are also honoring the UIL 6A Individual Girls Golf State Champion from Plano East Senior High School and the third-place Individual Boys Golf Winner from Plano Senior High, the UIL 6A Girls Tennis Double State Champions from Plano West Senior High. During the National Math Counts Competition, the Texas team, which included a Rice middle-schooler who won first place. At the International Science and Engineering Fair, Plano ISD students won a best-of category, a first place, two third places, four fourth places, and eight special awards. During the Plano West Mix Choir received an invitation to perform during the 2019 TMEA Clinic Convention. And as part of the state competition during the Visual Arts Scholastic Event Awards, one work was selected for the Texas Fine Arts Summit Exhibition. Six were gold-SEAL winners and 30 platinum medals were won by the Junior VASE, at the Junior VASE Competition. Please join me in applauding all these accomplishments of our students. And all of the support they received from their coaches, their teachers, and their parents and family members. Next, we have a recognition where I am pleased to recognize one of my colleagues, our colleague Tammy Richards. She has completed the Leadership Tasby, which is Texas Association of School Boards' Course of Study, and has earned the distinction of Master Trustee. Leadership Tasby began in 1993 as a way to offer advanced leadership training to trustees and is nationally recognized as a premier leadership training program sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards. Tammy Richards has earned membership in this elite group of Master Trustees who are committed to making a difference on behalf of schoolchildren here in Plano ISD and the entire state of Texas. So Tammy, congratulations. And let me, before you speak, just kind of tell the audience what's involved in this because it's a huge commitment. We already spend a ton of volunteer time in this capacity and in this particular program, you are, you apply statewide for the opportunity to participate and out of that, about 30? Is it about 30?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six people are selected statewide and it's, you know, big districts, small, you know, urban, suburban and so forth. So Tammy applied and was accepted on her first try and you attend sessions all over Texas studying different topics with all of your colleagues, so you're learning about the breadth of public education. So it's an even larger commitment and you deliver a project. So Tammy planned this in her schedule years ahead of time so that she would have the time and so we're proud that you've earned this designation.
Thank you so much. And Missy, I thank you for your support. I know you and Nancy are both Master Trustees, so I appreciate the example that you set. It's been a great experience because there are trustees there who are in districts of only 161 kids total. The total district's 161 kids and others large urban. And so it's very interesting to see the best practices that all could bring and we all are worried about the same thing, making sure children have the very best future. So I want to thank the district for your support, both the financial support to do it and the emotional support to move through the year. So thank you.
Well, congratulations.
Well, and Tammy, how many cities did you end up going into?
I think it was four different cities.
Congratulations, Tammy.
I have a recognition, Missy, if I may. The Distinguished Leadership Award is presented annually to a leadership Plano alumnus who has made significant and notable contributions to the betterment of the community. This year's recipient is our very own Presidential Scholar, Master Trustee, State Champion, and President, Missy Bender. The Board would like to take a moment to celebrate Missy, who has reached the pinnacle of community service by receiving this Distinguished Leadership Award for 2018. Missy serves as an example of how to cultivate leadership in our community and in our state. She has crafted a life of leading and developing leadership in others. As Missy begins her third term as Board President, Plano ISD is fortunate to have the benefit of her leadership as part of our Board and our school community. So, Missy, comments?
Thank you, David. Sarah snuck this part into the agenda. Really, I would just say it was unexpected and very lovely. So thank you all for being there to support me and, you know, it's just, it's humbling and it's just a big privilege and honor to be able to serve here with all of you and at the pleasure of our community. So, thank you.
Well, and I just want to add, you know, a lot of us have been through leadership Plano and so we know what it means and we know what it means to you as well. It's a fantastic organization, but to be recognized, and it's an organization that is designed to develop leaders. And so to recognize even amongst leaders, your leadership, I think it speaks volumes of what you offer to our community. And so this really is a very special award. You very well deserve it and I think we are all fortunate, I will speak for the rest of the crew, but I feel fortunate to have you as a Board Member at the same time that I've been able to serve and as our leader in times and as a follower at times. And, you know, good leadership means sometimes you do follow. And so it's been a real pleasure and this is a very well-deserved honor. I'm very proud of you.
Thank you very much. It's a real honor. Okay, enough about me. Let's move on to the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. This is when I get to call upon Assistant Superintendent of Business Services Ranny McDowell to make this special announcement and introductions. And again, Board Vice President, Dr. Yoram Solomon, will make a special presentation.
Thank you, President Bender. The district received this financial award that is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the GFPA or Government Finance Officers Association. This award is given to governmental entities that prepare and submit a comprehensive annual financial report, also known as a CAFR, to the GFPA. It is then reviewed by independent evaluators to make sure it meets the required extensive reporting criteria. The purpose of the CAFR is to provide the public with a deeper understanding of the school district's finances than the standard TEA format allows. This Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is the highest recognition of financial reporting that a school district can receive. And remarkably, this is the 35th consecutive year that Plano ISD has received this award. This award for the financial report was for the period ending June 30 of 2017. There's been a constant factor in all 35 years that Plano ISD has received this award and that is Linda Madden, our Executive Director of Financial Services, who has been with the district for 38 years. I would like to invite her up to receive this award and say a few words.
Thank you this evening for this time and recognition. Superintendent Bonzer and President Bender and members of the Board, we really do appreciate your continued support of the Finance Department and our ability to participate in this GFPA award program. I do have a couple of coworkers here with me tonight. One of them is a really key player in this, like for Kristi Tate, who is our Director of Budget and Accounting. She's been my partner in crime in this effort for quite some time as well. And then Amy Nelson, I believe, is here. She's way at the back there. She's relatively new to our department. She's our compliance officer and we're the only three that were able here to make it tonight, but I just wanted to say that it is truly an honor, a pleasure to take, receive this award on behalf of the whole department. And there are only three of us here tonight, but we do have 28 staff members in the Finance Department. We do have a broad range of responsibilities within our department. Everything from overseeing the issuance of bonds, the spending of those proceeds, all federal grants and associated required reporting is done by our department. All of the accounting, general ledger, financial reporting to TEA, et cetera, and other entities are our responsibilities. We pay all the bills for the district, from bond projects to supplies for the classroom to field trip, entry fees, whatever, and everything in between. Payroll processing, TRS reporting, IRS-required governmental reporting also under our area. We get to invest the funds of the district and oversee that process as well as budget preparation and management of the budgets. So there's never a dull moment. There's never not enough to do. So we always have something going on all during the year. I was thinking today about achieving this award for 35 consecutive years and so when you think about that, the word consistent comes to mind. And when I think about the definition of consistent, I found a couple of things today that I think really do describe the Finance Department. One was that consistent is always behaving or happening in a similar, especially positive way. And the other one is marked by harmony, regularity, and steady continuity. So I think our department exemplifies both of those traits. We've been very fortunate to experience a lot of continuity in staff. Plus, we have a good harmony within our group and it's an excellent group to work with. And this is clearly a team award. It is not an achievement that a couple of people achieve. And I know I tell you that on an annual basis, but it's one that is clearly the case and we very much appreciate the recognition time tonight. Thank you very much.
So every year, Linda, I think is gonna kill me when I say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway because I've never had an audience this large. The last time Plano did not get this award, I was in the 5th grade at Davis Elementary. As you can tell from the white walls, that's been a long time ago. And I think Return of the Jedi, if my math is right, Return of the Jedi was in the movie theater. So Plano was less than 90,000 population. And so in terms of the consistency comment, think in terms of this town going from 90,000 to 300,000 or 275, whatever we are now. That period of growth, the expansion of the schools, everything that we've had to do in the last 35 years and everything has been done perfectly. So congratulations.
I would just add that it's by no accident that we're AAA bond-rated and the consistency is what we're talking about here. So thank you, Finance Department. Thank you.
We will now move to the regular public comment portion of our agenda. For the public comment portion of the agenda, the Board has public comment cards that are accepted from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Cards are not accepted after 7:00 PM and are not transferable to other parties or speakers. All cards were collected and given to Carla Oliver or a representative of the Communications Department who will present the speakers during this time. Ms. Oliver, do we have any speakers for public comment?
We do. We have three speakers for agenda items and we have one that would be considered non-agenda.
Okay. Pursuant to Board Policies BED Legal, BED Local, and BED Exhibit, the Board may place reasonable restraints on the number, length, and frequency of presentations, so long as it does not unfairly discriminate among speakers based upon their viewpoint. The Board is not authorized to discuss or act on the public's comments or complaints if the subject is not on the agenda. If a member of the public or the Board inquires about a subject for which notice has not been given, the Board may only make a statement of specific factual information, recite policy in response to the inquiry, or refer the person to a staff member for more information or assistance. If the subject of the public comment is already on the agenda for the meeting, the Board may invite the speaker to stay until the Board reaches that topic on the agenda. Thirty minutes total have been allotted to your persons who desire to make comments to the Board. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of the meeting shall complete the appropriate public comment form before the meeting begins and indicate the topic about which they wish to speak. No presentation shall exceed three minutes. If you are not finished speaking by the end of your three minutes, I will interrupt you so that we can move to the next person. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the Board. And finally, pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 and 551.0821, the Board will not permit the presentation of personally identifiable information regarding a student and will not discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. Should a speaker wish to address one of these issues, they must do so through the appropriate local grievance policies, FNG Local, DGPA Local, or GF Local. So generally, this is what's gonna happen. The three of you who've signed up to speak on an agenda item are gonna speak now and you have three minutes. Secretary Nancy Humphrey will be the timer. When you have one minute remaining, so you've spent two, Nancy's gonna When you have one minute remaining, so you've spent two, Nancy's going to give you a sign, and it's going to look like this.
I'll say one minute.
Okay. Then you'll know you have one minute left, so begin to wrap it up. If you're not finished at one minute, then I'm going to jump in and ask you to really, really wrap it up. Okay? The person who signed up to speak on a non-agenda topic, that will occur at the end of the meeting. And I'm sorry, this is going to be a long meeting, because we have a lot of territory to cover. So at this time, we're going to call the three forward. And Ms. Oliver, over to you.
Thank you. I would like to invite Stephen Ding forward, please.
Before I begin, I'd like to apologize to all the principals that are just trying to get their appointment, but today I'd like to speak on the issue of GPA and rank. And so my name is Stephen Ding. I just graduated last Saturday. And on Saturday, at the graduation ceremony, Mrs. King mentioned that Plano West is in the top 1% of schools in the nation. And that recognition comes because the district has provided us with a lot of opportunities to find what our passions are and to pursue them. And for me, that passion was in music, as well to explore that passion through band, seven years in my secondary school career. And while our fine arts program is really second to none, our band program, our orchestra program, our choir program throughout the district, and even our theater programs and our visual arts program has won countless awards and accolades on the local, state, and national level. Now, in the West Coast, especially in our band program, we've been facing a problem in the past couple of years with dwindling participation count. And so two years ago, my junior year, Mr. Kane, our now-retired band director, sent me to Jasper and Jefferson to kind of do some rumor control and figure out why all these kids are quitting. And one of the main responses was my parents were concerned, or I was concerned, about my GPA and rank and how that would affect me. Now, make no mistake, GPA and rank is incredibly important in the college admission process, and I'm very happy with the recommendations that are proposed today with the cumulative GPA and the ranking GPA. And that would really help us here in our band program, because now with college admissions, it's much more of a holistic review. And this year, in our class, in our band, we've been, band students have been accepted into Ivy League schools, Northwestern, Yale, and we've been awarded over $2 million in scholarships just alone in Plano West Band. So the, so on behalf of our band, we are very happy to see these recommendations moving forward with the cumulative GPA, which takes account of all your classes, and the ranking GPA so that students can participate in band and jazz band orchestra without their rank penalized. And before I conclude, I'll just mention one more thing. My mom, she is not a very strong English speaker, and so she's been getting whizzer for information about PIAIC matters from WeChat, which is an online Chinese kind of Facebook counterpart. And a lot of the things that were being discussed on there were incorrect misinformation. So moving forward, I guess for the district, I think it might be beneficial
One minute.
...to have some material in the language, which we have such a growing Chinese community and Indian communities, to publish material regarding these topics in those languages so that they can be informed as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Gunjan Patrahar.
My name is Gunjan Patra. And I've come to these board meetings almost across this entire semester to try and speak my opinion regarding class rank. And I'm really excited that within an hour, I can finally see what the efforts of not just me, but all the students, teachers, and parents have come in to try and change the system, can see their efforts come in, either at a pass or fail. But one final thing that I want to say before this vote does occur is basically upon the impacts of like learning that occur based upon this proposal. One of the biggest things I like upon the Plano ISD rank proposal is the fact that it allows you to increase the overall amount of people that are like taking electives. Personally, I've found that a lot of the choices I made during high school, like dropping orchestra and Spanish, are things that I fundamentally regret. And I did them mainly because I felt that they were necessary to improve my GPA. Because in schools like Plano West, where over a fourth of the class effectively had over a 4.0 GPA, taking a class like orchestra, or band, or Principles of Engineering, or Principles of Health Science, would actually lower someone's GPA. In a school environment in which even a hundredth of a GPA point separates 10 or 20 ranks, students are motivated to go through nothing other than just trying to do what's best for their class rank. But in this system, where for 90% of students don't have a class rank anymore, and for 10% of the top 10%, they effectively don't really have a rank anymore, this incentive goes away. And now students can effectively take classes that actually interest them, like maybe Principles of Engineering, or Honors Computer Science III, things that they feel like taking as opposed to some blind AP class that they are forced to take due whether or not they like the content or not. And in terms of school culture, we can finally see an environment in which people are no longer focused upon what exactly their rank is and judge people based upon that. Like especially in my schools of Jasper and Plano West, I noticed that that was a huge problem. And like Rank Day would be the worst day of them all, in which people would be fearful to check their rank because of how judged, how people would judge them for it. And at the end of the day, what I've noticed is that we can allow a lot more people to take these risks and take classes that they actually enjoy, rather than things that they feel like they have to take in order to stay competitive. People will see a lot in terms of decreasing and cheating, because a lot of people won't decide to start joining in because of the fact they feel like everyone else is doing it. And then our administrators hopefully will have to do far less in order to have to fix that problem themselves. And a lot of cases, I feel like we've been waiting for this for a long time. Students have been struggling under three, four, or five hours of sleep, getting rid of any class that might hurt them, and feel that their futures are insecure when everyone around them is smart, everyone around them is bright, and they feel like nothing is guaranteed because they're surrounded by such amazing people. But within the system, when we rank people and pit them against each other, we create a competitive environment in which people feel they have to beat each other, and effectively cooperation goes away, and people feel more insecure and more stressed. Let's change this, and let's change an environment where the two most used apps by students today are the Gradebook app and the Calculator app. That can finally be changed with this proposal, and I would really like to see it come through. So please do us all a favor, pass it and save our generation.
Our last speaker at this time is Kevin Bai.
I'd like to address a topic that hasn't been brought up by anyone else but that class rank's effects, and that is physical health. So I have a personal story to tell. This semester, I took dance, which is quite unusual for, I think, people like me. And I really enjoyed the class and almost wished I could have taken it all four years. But why did I not take it for four years? Because I was really worried about my own class rank. If I took dance for four years, then my GPA would effectively drop a lot because it's a 4.0 class. Now, many other students do the same thing with physical education, and they choose instead to take the e-school course of physical education, which I just don't feel like taking an online course for physical education. It's very practical. But anyway, this is another reason, I've already been here twice, but this is my final reason for supporting the Plano ISD proposal to do away with class rank once and for all. And by effectively taking out these elective classes such as physical education from the ranking GPA, we eliminate the incentive for students to skip on, skip out on classes like PE, which is really necessary for their health. Also, I'd like to address that, you know, sleep deprivation is another problem that can lead to worse health. And this proposal, if passed, would benefit our health by not only making us exercise more, but we can also sleep more. So I do hope that you guys pass this proposal today. Thank you.
President Bender, I know this is a little atypical, and I don't know if the students will stay throughout this long meeting, but I just want to express my pride in you, that you have charted pathways that will help the people who come behind you. I certainly want to applaud the young man who did band for all seven years. I'm a former Plano West band mom. I know the time it takes. I know how you have to balance a lot. So I just, I think these three young people are such a great representative of why we are sitting up here, the things that we want to do in our community. So thank you.
I want to add to that, Tammy. At graduation, we were at all of them. So I think it was at the Plano East graduation, there was a student speaker who talked about your generation getting involved and making change happen. And that was the first time in my, this is my 13th year of serving on the board, where I've listened to a speech like that made by a student at graduation, really motivating young people to become engaged. So I was pleased to hear that, and I'm proud that our students have not just come to this meeting, but you've come to many meetings. So thank you for engaging in the process, and I hope you continue to do that over the course of your life. We will now address the consent agenda, which includes, finally, personnel recommendations, minutes of previous meetings, bids, purchases, and construction items. Are there any requests to remove an item or items from the consent agenda for further Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Monisette for some introductions.
I'm going to come to this microphone so I don't have my back to, yes, I introduce our new leaders. As I introduce each of you, if you will stand, and sorry for those of you that are already standing, because we don't have enough seats, and also family members or friends that have come with you, if you would stand as well. While I know we had some business to take care of before this, particularly for those of you that are joining the Plano community for the first time, I think it's such a good example of what our school district and our culture is really about. It's about growing leaders, whether at the student level or at the adult level, and about our pride in student achievement at all areas in our district. So I appreciate your patience, but more so, I'm glad you got to see a glimpse into our culture. This evening, I will start our introductions, naming the new principal at Plano West Senior High School. These are big shoes to fill, as I know everyone is well aware, and we have found exactly the right person to lead the Wolf Pack in the future. I'm so pleased to announce that Janice Williams will be the new principal at Plano West Senior High School. Janice has been the principal at Clark for the past eight years, and previously has served at both Vines High School and at Jasper High School. Just brings a wealth of knowledge, compassion, love for students and families and staff. Janice is joined this evening by her husband Steve and her mother Mary, and of course, by the Wolf Pack, who have come out to support her. Janice, if you all will wave from where you are, congratulations. So pleased to welcome someone new to our Plano family of leaders. Sean Flynn is joining us as the new principal of Christie Elementary. Sean, will you wave? Sean is joined by his wife Christie, and beautiful family, children Brayden, Bryce, and Michaela, and I think grandson Jackson. Sean is coming to us with experience, having been a principal in Irving ISD and Denton ISD, and we feel very fortunate to have recruited him to Plano. So Sean, welcome to you. In our last principal announcement for this evening, I'm pleased to introduce Leanne Earnhardt as the next principal of Razor Elementary. Leanne is joined by her husband Jeremy and her parents Larry and Mary Ann Blevins. Leanne has previously been, she's currently a principal at Centennial, has previously also served at Hightower and Meadows, and we are thrilled to have her leading Razor. Congratulations. Looks like the former principal of Razor and his cute family is here also. And then I have some elementary assistant principals that we are naming this evening. I'd first like to introduce Alex Casado. Alex is in the back with his brand-new baby son Cameron and his wife Crystal. Alex was part of our Leadership Development Academy, and we were anxiously awaiting Cameron's arrival. So we're so pleased that you could be here this evening. Alex has been a teacher at Memorial Elementary and is the new assistant principal at McCall Elementary. Congratulations. Another LDA graduate, pleased to introduce Kate Forché and her husband Stephen and son Jackson. We need Jackson to stand up so we can see his outfit. Oh. And Kate, I think you have some other family members that are with you this evening, if you would stand as well. Kate is our new assistant principal at Shepherd Elementary and has been serving as the social-emotional teacher leader at Meadows Elementary. So welcome to a new adventure, Kate. Continuing with our LDA group, I'm next, I'm excited to introduce Kristen Glasscock, who will be the new assistant principal at Mitchell Elementary. Probably are familiar with some of Kristen's family. Kristen's joined this evening by her children Grace and Kayden, her husband Chris, her mom Jean Williams, and her mother-in-law, Memory Glasscock. Kristen is moving from her position currently as the pace specialist at Matthews Elementary. In joining Kristen as her new counterpart, we are really pleased to welcome Reina Matthews-Wetstone to Plano ISD. Reina is here this evening with her mom, Victoria Matthews, her daughter Cameron Matthews, and maybe some friends in the audience as well. Reina is coming to us from Frisco ISD, where she most recently has been a teacher at Liberty High School. So we are thrilled to have you coming to Plano, and I know you and Kristen will make a great team. We have a couple of secondary new leaders. First, I'd like to introduce, in a new role, Rob Epler, who is the new associate principal at Plano East Senior High School. You all know Rob in his leadership currently at Jasper and formerly at Plano West and at Frankfurt. Rob is the perfect person for this position. We're so excited to have him taking on this new role. Rob's joined by his wife Sheri and his two children, Tom and Lindsay. Next, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal at Williams High School, Engie Demuse-Stovall is going to be joining Williams High School. Engie is joined tonight by her parents, Jimmy and Jane Dismuse, and her children, Kevin and Ian Stovall, and her friend, Michael Brizson. Engie is currently an English teacher at MacMillan High School, so she's just going to skip across to a new family home and join Williams, and we're thrilled to see you in that role, Engie. The new assistant principal at Plano Senior High School is Marjorie Hall. Marjorie is joining the Wildcat family from Gwynne Special Programs Center. And just, I know you bring such wonderful experience with you, Marjorie. I think you're joined tonight by your parents, Moses and Erlene Hall. And is your grandmother with you? Okay. Well, I'm glad your parents were able to come, and congratulations on your new adventure. George King has made another wonderful hire. George King has made another wonderful hire. Joining the Plano East Panther Administrative Team is Brandon Johnson. Where's the rest of that? There they are. We're welcoming Brandon to Plano from Richardson ISD, where he currently serves as a science teacher, and with him this evening is his wife Kristen and two beautiful children, Grace and Aiden. We're really happy to have you joining Plano. In rounding out our new group of leaders, I'd like to introduce Evan Lee, who is, will be the new assistant principal at Carpenter Middle School. Evan is coming to us from Denton ISD, where he serves as a social studies teacher and instructional coach, so he brings a strong understanding of teaching and learning with him. I think Evan's joined tonight by his wife Michelle, and we are thrilled to have you join our Plano family as well. Congratulations.
Dr. Hasley, do you have some introductions?
Yes, I don't have quite as many as Ms. Monisette did, but I have some very important announcements as well. We're excited to introduce Paula Long. Paula will be joining us as our executive director for Special Education Services. She has been in education 24 years, started as a special ed teacher, working with students with emotional disturbance. She's been a diagnostician, director, executive director. She has been serving at the district level for 15 years, and she'll be leaving her current post as executive director of Educational Support Services in Arlington ISD to join us in Plano, and we're excited to welcome her. And tonight with Paula, she has her number-one supporter, Kevin Serat, and friends Terry and Eddie Williams. We're excited to have you joining Plano ISD. I would also like to recognize a new director for Special Education Services. Bethany Rogers is currently an assistant director and has been in our department for five years, and she, her position is being upgraded to director, to take care of some additional responsibilities that will be adding on in our new changes into the department. So, Bethany, we're excited to have you in that new position. She has been in Plano ISD for 19 years. She's served as special ed teacher, assistant principal, campus principal, and also through the coordinator and assistant director positions in special ed. I believe Bethany's husband Randy and children Ryan and Riley would love to be here, but they're at Riley's Dance Recital, so congratulations, Bethany. And one more, Karen Beekman will be joining, filling David Hitt's shoes, as director of career and technical education. And Karen has been in Plano ISD as a career and technical education teacher and coordinator. She has been in the coordinator position for four years, coordinating our engineering, Cisco networking, architecture, automotive, and agricultural science programs, and she has worked to prepare for this leadership position. We're excited for her to move into that. And she's joined by her husband Randy and son Grayson, who made it through this long of a meeting, so we're excited to have you join us in that position in the district.
So, I get the final introduction, but before I make that introduction, I just want to say to all of you who are new administrators to Plano ISD, welcome to the family. So, we take care of each other, we help each other, we care about each other, but more than that, we care about the kids first. And so, if you're here, we know that you have demonstrated that same care for children, and we want to do everything we can to support you, and we can't wait to start working with you. For all of those of you who have stepped up to a new role and responsibility in the district, congratulations. Same thing goes, you know how to ask for our support, and you know you'll have it. So, congratulations, families, in advance. Thank you for the sacrifices that you have made and continue to make, as you give up your family member to us in service to kids and families of Plano ISD. We know that you do that, and we thank you for that. So, congratulations to everyone. We're so happy to have the room filled with new members of our family. So, the final introduction is someone who is actually not here tonight, but the board is approving the appointment of a new chief operating officer, and that role will be filled by Dr. Teresa Williams. Teresa is coming to us with four years of experience as the deputy superintendent in Lubbock ISD. Prior to that, she served in, as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, director, and executive director in Garland ISD, and Teresa could not be with us this evening. Her husband is an associate principal in Lubbock, who is being recognized at TASSP as one of the secondary assistant principals of the year this evening, so she is with him in Austin, but she will be coming to join the Plano ISD family on July 2nd, and we're excited to welcome her, and I know you'll all get to know her in the not-too-distant future. So, Teresa Williams is someone to be seen soon, but thanks to all of you for your commitment to Plano ISD.
So, welcome to all of the administrative appointments this evening, and now that they are completed, you and your families can gather in the lobby for photos. Dr. Katrina Hasley to introduce the report on the proposed amendments to the District of Innovation Plan. Dr. Hasley?
Thank you, President Bender.
Katrina, if you want to wait a minute, that's fine, but it seemed to be, you know, dissipating, and then it didn't. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Okay, are we ready?
That works.
Okay. Thank you.
Please try to keep it down, we're continuing the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bender, Ms. Bondseren, trustees. The local committee for the...
Officer Grant, would you close, Officer Grant, would you close the doors at the back, please?
Thank you. I'm pleased tonight to bring two amendments that we're proposing to be added to our District of Innovation Plan. The local committee, I just show you a timeline here, met on April 30th to discuss two additional amendments, and the district-based improvement committee unanimously approved these amendments at their meeting. Subsequently, we posted the amendments on the website for the 30 days that are required, and I have not received any questions through the web contact procedure. So, after this presentation tonight in the public open meeting, we'll be recommending these for board action. The First Amendment seeks relief from Texas Education Code 21.404 on planning and preparation time for teachers. The Education Code states that each classroom teacher is entitled to at least 450 minutes within each two-week period for instructional preparation, including parent-teacher conferences, evaluating students' work, and planning. A planning and preparation period under this section may not be less than 45 minutes within the instructional day, and that is the part that we'd like to focus on. The exemption from this would not, would only be used for specialized programs where students are not on the campus for an entire regular school day, up to seven hours. So, when students are there for a shorter amount of time, such as our half-day pre-K class, the adult transition program will have shortened hours, most of those participants will be out in the community many, much of the time, or working on jobs. And also, summer school programs is another example. So, you can see that moving the teacher planning period outside of the instructional time when students are present would be to the best benefit of the students, so they're with the teachers the entire time, that they're there for instruction. This would maximize that time that they have together. The summer programs, currently, we don't have any that are over a half-day long, but if we were to ever extend a program over half-day, then we would seek this exemption for that as well. The Second Amendment has to do with class size for kindergarten through fourth grade. Texas Education Code 25.112 states that a district must submit a request for a class-size exception for any classrooms in kindergarten through fourth grade that exceed the 22-student class-size limit. This exemption would really allow us to strategically determine when and if it's in the best interest of students to divide a class and reassign to a different teacher. Especially in the lower grades, this can be a difficult thing to do, when students are well into the first semester, they've developed relationships with the teachers and classmates, and it becomes difficult to reassign. In some instances, however, that is appropriate, when we have a campus where additional students are continuing to enroll, and we do need to divide into two classes, but when we're only over by one or two students across a grade level, we would seek exemption from that Education Code, so that we could make that decision, along with the campus team, to see what the best, what best works for them and their students. We feel this exemption would offer us the opportunity to ensure efficient use of resources, but still maintain optimal class size by only increasing a minimal amount across the grade level.
Dr. Hasley, just to confirm for a moment, with us seeking this exemption, we can seek this exemption for any reason we find in the best interest of our children, right? So, for example, you may start a school year with even 23 to 1, if you think that the educational experience will not be negatively impacted. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct. Any other questions on the two amendments? Well, thank you for the opportunity to bring these proposed amendments to you. The administration committees involved believe these would truly benefit the students and staff of Plano ISD, in keeping with our district goals focused on student improvement and ensuring effective use of resources.
Thank you, Dr. Hasley. As part of this new opportunity for districts to seek status with, as a district of innovation, we sought that, and we received it, and now we're modifying our plan as presented with these two opportunities for amendment. Having heard those, and having those proceeded through, they proceeded through the DBIC Committee, we now, and we've sought input from the community, we now hold, are going to have a required public meeting regarding the District of Innovation Plan amendments. So, at this time, I will welcome any audience members who wish to speak at this time. If you choose to speak, please do so at the front of the room, or the right side of the room, my right side of the room, at this time.
Not all at once.
So, seeing no speakers, I will now close the public hearing. Now, we will entertain a motion to approve the local District of Innovation Plan amendments as presented. Do I have a motion to accept as presented?
I move that we accept as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda for discussion in action is a public hearing on the 2018-19 budget and the proposed tax rate. At this time, this is for information, this item is for information only. I will open the public hearing about the 2018-19 budget and the proposed tax rate. Randy McDowell, our assistant superintendent for Business Services, will introduce discussion of the 2018-19 budget as part of the public hearing on the 2018-19 budget and proposed tax rate. Mr. McDowell.
Yes, thank you, President Bender, members of the board. You should have a copy of the budget book at your place. Also, if there's any members, or anyone in the audience that would like a copy, we do have some ladies that can hand them one. If you'll just raise your hand, then they will give you a copy. So, we're doing this a little bit different than previous years, and we're just going to do it out of the book, because it's hard to put that much information up on the screen. And so, in your book, if you will flip to page three, it's just behind the Budget Overview, this is the budget planning calendar, and of course, we started the budget process right after I got here in November, and so it's a process that the board is very familiar with, and we've had multiple board meetings, and so I won't go through that entire calendar, but we have worked very hard on this budget. On page five is a Budget Overview, the economic factors and property values. This budget is based on an 8% growth rate on property values. Those are shown in the table below, and so the current-year values are about $50.4 billion net taxable amount, and the latest projected number from the appraisal district is $54.7 billion, and so you can see a historical look at how much those values have increased. As we're well aware, though, that just because property values increase does not mean that the school district is any better off, especially on the M&amp;O side, and we'll talk more about that. On the next page, we talk about legislation and tax transparency, and then about the middle of the page, we talk about budget priorities, and we've talked about these in the past several board meetings. I'll run through these briefly. The first of these was to provide a general pay increase for all employees, if the budget allowed us to do so. At the last meeting, we did approve a 2% general pay increase for the midpoint of all pay grades, and took the starting teacher pay to $53,000 for a bachelor's and $54,000 for a master's. We also included additional funding for student learning initiatives of $778,625, such as expansion of the robotics program, enhancement to the campus improvement process, ESL certification for middle-school teachers, and continuous extended planning time for teachers. Also, the commitment to equity initiatives, additional funding of $783,374, include expanded summer school for elementary, expansion of social-emotional learning, addition of social workers at elementary, addition of assistant principals at campuses with centralized special-ed programs, and addition of APs at two campuses for school improvement. Special education initiatives included an additional $1,641,120, that include the addition and opening of the Adult Transition Center, addition of two centralized behavioral units, additional positional campuses to support the overall special-ed program, along with behavioral training for special-ed teachers and assistants, and also, safety and security initiatives, that's a very hot topic right now, as we all know, funding an additional just over 1.7 million for SRO officers, adding 15 of those officers at middle-school and high-school campuses, and also some security monitors, monitors at high-school campuses. So, those are some of the main initiatives that are included within this budget. The tax rate, the current proposed tax rate for the coming year would be $1.439, and that's $1.17 M&amp;O and 26.9 cents on INS, and that would make the fourth year in a row of those same tax rates for both M&amp;O and INS. On the next page are the, are the budget assumptions that were made. Again, we talked about the tax rates of $1.17 and 26.9 cents, the net taxable value. Student enrollment projection that this budget is based on is 53,724 students, and that converts to 50,776 ADA and 63,000... converts to 50,776 ADA and 63,281 weighted ADA is projected.
Randy, just to ask a point of clarification, is the difference between the 50.7 and the 53.7 just kids not coming to school, or are there other reasons that they would not be attending?
Yes.
That's 6%, that's a lot.
That would primarily be that. Also, it could be, for example, pre-K, they count as a full enrolled student, but they only count as half of an ADA. You could have some high-school students that don't go a full day that would count as a full enrollment but wouldn't count as a full ADA, and the rest of that would be attendance.
I know we're worrying about dropping attendance across the district, just dropping enrollment, so this may be an area we want to do a little digging to see if there are some ways that we can increase, because I know in some of your earlier estimates, you know, losing 200 kids or 400 kids was tremendously impactful to us.
Correct.
So if we can get back these, you know, 3,000 in some way, shape, or form, that would be beneficial. So I think that would be worth some study.
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next section, these are the combined budgets, and so if you'll go to page nine, this is also the page that we will ask you to approve as an action item. These are the three budgets that the board does have to approve by statute. This is the general fund, the food service fund, and the debt service fund. And so I'll go through these briefly. In the general fund, total revenues in this proposed budget, $697,720,995. Total expenditures in functional categories, $699,403,971. Other expenditures or other uses that are transfers out to other funds, there's an additional $1,322,366 that takes the total expenditures to $700,726,337, and that exceeds the projected revenues by $3,5,0342. And again, as you know, we were working with a much larger deficit number than that a few months ago, and we've continued to work really hard to try to trim this budget down. The next column on the food service, total revenues, $24,993,127. Total expenditures, $26,541,322, and that's a deficit budget of $1,548,195, and there is sufficient fund balance within the food service fund to cover that deficit. I expect that we would realize a loss significantly smaller than that at the end of the year. The proposed budget on debt service, again, based on the 26.9 INS rate projected, local revenues, $142,687,351. State revenues, $1,172,042. Total revenues, $143,859,393, with expenditures of that same amount, and that's a balanced budget. And please stop me if you have any questions as we go. Behind the next tab is a breakdown of the general fund, so we take that one column and we go into more detail here. So the second column over would be the exact same numbers that we just looked at on the proposed budget. The first column is the current-year original adopted budget, and so you can see some comparisons by line item, and we have a dollar change column, the third one over, and then we have a percentage change column on the far right. The current-year original adopted budget was just under a $6.8 million deficit. A lot of that was because of the hail insurance claims and the impact that those were having. If you've got any questions there, again, please stop me. On the next page, we go into a more detailed breakdown on, on the revenue portion of the budget, and so we've got a breakdown of our local revenues, and again, comparing them from the proposed to the prior-year adopted budget and the change. We have state revenues, we have federal revenues, transfers in and out, and then we have the net revenue change. And so total revenues are increasing by $13.7 million after we net out recapture, and the largest increase in that is the per capita funding of about $7.8 million, and that's because it's the second year of the biennium, and we've talked about that when you're Chapter 41 district, you do receive more available school funding in the second year of the biennium. On the next pages, we go, we take each one of those functional levels, and we break it down further by different object codes, so we go salary and benefits, TRS-on-behave payments, contracted services, supplies and materials, other operating, and capital outlay. And so we wanted to provide that to you so you could see more of the line items and where those changes occurred from the original budget to the projected. I'm not going to read all those numbers to you unless you would like me to. And let's go to page, let's go to the back at this point. We've got some graphs that start in the supplemental financial data analysis, and so if you will turn to page 19. And so the first graph at the top is the general fund budgeted revenues and other resources. So of the general fund budget, 88.6% of that comes from property taxes. State funding is another 5.16. Other state funding is 3.19. Federal funding is .86, and other local is 2.20. Below that, we have a breakdown of the expenditure side, and so these are all the different functions that we have in the general fund. Instruction is 44.6% of that total budget. If you look on the opposite side of the graph, on the upper left, you see recapture is just under 30% of the total budget, and then you can see the, the other areas. On the next page, we've got the general fund budget by object code, and so salaries are 85.5% of the total budget, and this does exclude recapture, so this is only the funds that we retain. And so we, we do have a strong focus on staff at 85.5% of our total expenditures. Contracted services are 9.4%. Supplies and materials, 3.9. 6,400s are 1.2, and capital outlay is under 1%. Further down, if we take that 85.5% of the budget on the salaries and we break it down by functional level, you can see the breakdown of that. And so instruction is 72.6% of our total payroll cost, of our total payroll budget. If you take the, the ones that relate to the campuses, which would be instruction, media, school leadership, guides and counseling, social work, health services, and co-curricular, those together equal 89% of the budget. And so the rest of the budget would be things outside of campus. That would include things like administration, that would also include things, maintenance costs, anything that's not campus-related, or not campus-based. Okay, on the next graph, on the next page, on page 21, we see a bar graph here that shows our total local revenue on the property taxes and how that's increased from $439 million up to $618 million projected for the coming year. And then at the bottom, you see the state revenue, and because we're Chapter 41, we don't receive much state revenue, it's primarily the available school fund, TRS-on-behave, and those other things, and that has remained pretty constant. Down at the bottom, you see our recapture history over the past six years. So in 1314, we were paying about $36 million in recapture, 1415, $47 million, 1516, we went up to $60 million. Last year, we crossed the $100 million at 105. This year, we project that to be $155 million, and next year, based on an 8% growth, we project that to be at $208 million, so pretty much doubling over a two-year period. And unfortunately, there's no end inside as long as property values keep increasing, unless the state funding system has changed. On the next page, we looked at the tax rate history graph. At the bottom of that page, we've also looked at the property values and the increases we've seen there. On page 23, we've got Templeton's projected student enrollment here, out for about 10 years, and so we are experiencing some of the decline. He does project that it's more aggressive in the next couple of years, and then we get some flat. We also have, on the next graph, historical average daily attendance, and also weighted ADA. On the next page, we see the tax levy on an average residence. So property owners, homesteads are increasing in value pretty significant here in Plano. The average residence in 1415 was $277,528, and for next year, that number's projected at $377,600, or a $100,000 increase over a five-year period on the average residence. Again, that is, that does not benefit the district, as we're all well aware, because as values go up, so does recapture. So we see the taxes on that average residence, and they've increased $1,100 over that same five-year period. Next is a graph that shows the historical fund balance, and the following two pages are the notice of public meeting, which said that we were going to have a meeting tonight at 7 o'clock to look at the proposed budget and the proposed tax rates. We will not adopt those tax rates until we get certified values at the end of July, and so that will either come in August or September, and we cannot adopt a rate higher than these that are proposed without reposting that notice prior to that board meeting. Now if you'll flip back to page 16, this is the food and nutritional services budget. Again, we're comparing the proposed budget to the adopted budget. There's, have some pretty insignificant changes there. And on the following tab, or I'm sorry, behind the next tab, on page 17, we compare the debt service proposed budget to the current-year original adopted budget, and debt service revenue would increase just under $12 million with the expenditures, with the debt payments increasing the same amount at $11.9 million. That does incorporate in another issue that we would be proposing in probably August or September, and we're still working with the financial advisors on that and the structure of that. We really need certified values in before we can fully structure that out. Behind that is a breakdown of those debt payments for the coming year. You've got the principal and interest amount and the total requirement. So of that amount, principal would be $94.94 million, interest would be $44.5 million, and the total requirement would be $139.442 million. And that is all I have on the presentation of the proposed budget for 2018-2019. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I actually just have more of an editorial comment. We're working on strategy right now. Well, this really is our strategy, where we spend our money shows where our heart is. And the quote I read earlier today, it's a repeat part of, "If children were falling behind despite excellent instruction, we would try different instructional approaches, and if necessary, other intensive assistance." As I look at this budget right now, I don't think we're nearing intensive. $1.7 million of what we're investing in a couple of special programs, that's about 0.3% of our non-recaptured budget. So I sort of implore my, my colleagues and the administration, as we look to work on the budget, the strategy, what we're going to do for kids, we've got some significant needs, and money is one of the solutions to some of those needs. And so I don't think we're there yet in terms of providing the right intensive assistance, and we need to keep working on that.
Randy, do you remember off the top of your head where do we stand in percentage with our fund balance in terms of percentage of our budget right now, and what is the red line for us?
Yes, and so if you remember, we did look at different ways to look at what, what we think is an optimum fund balance.
Right.
And so there's many different ways. There's not one formal way of how you come up with a percentage of how much fund balance you have, nor how much you need to have. And so we talked about the typical guidance from TA has always been three to four months operating. I think it goes way back early in my career, and, but, but that can vary drastically from one district to another, and so in Plano ISD's situation, as we talked about, because one is we're on a June 30 end fiscal year, and we're a Chapter 41 district that doesn't bring in tax revenue until December and primarily in January and February, that we have to cash flow this district for almost a six-month period, and I believe our number on that was about, cost $150 million that we had to have, just in reserves to not have to go to the bank to have to borrow money. So we currently have, you know, 220-something million that's in fund balance, some of that is assigned. Also, we've, we've always got to think about when we have a year the values go flat, it's, they just don't increase, it's going to cost us about $40 million, and so that's going to be a $40 million use of that. And I can tell you, this afternoon, we opened bids on phase two of property insurance, and as you know, we didn't get renewed, as many districts, especially in the metroplex did, and just because of the hailstorms and also in the Houston area. With it almost evident that the deductibles are going to increase and maybe increase significantly, our exposure on any type of hail claim or any type of insurance claim is going to be significantly higher. And if we would have had a 5% deductible on the last hailstorms, we would have, in looking at it briefly today, we would have paid the majority of that claim ourselves, and that was about a $57 million claim.
That was 2016?
2016. We're still doing those roofing projects, but the point is, our exposure is, is going to increase, and the higher that deductible amount is, the more our exposure's going to be if we do have a claim. So I guess I say all that to say, I don't know how much fund balance a district like us needs. We need a log for the cash flow just because the type of district that we are. But secondly is just with the exposure on property values going flat, because we always run out of lag on that, and then with property insurance, we could see fund balance go very quick if the roads going bad.
Right. I remember your slides showed $96 million by the school year 2122, and so if we take down the 99 from where we are now, which is just, the 96 from where we are now, which is just over 220, would the 130 or 124, would it last us for six months in that school year? Assuming, you know, property values continue to grow at 8%, we don't have an insurance, we don't have a hailstorm.
Yeah, I think we would be getting close in the three-to-four-year period of having to borrow money in order, not because we don't have any fund balance, but for cash flow needs.
Right.
I think we could be borrowing money.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
So I've got a, a comment, but probably not the comment I typically make, I'm always mad about recapture, but, you know, Tammy, I think to your point about spending our money, how we spend it is important, and I totally agree with you, and that's the hard choice that we are about to have to make, I think, next year is looking at our budget and where we move the pieces around. The problem is that at this level, this board, that's a shell game, because that's just taking from one pot to put it into another, but it doesn't address the overall problem, which is, as our recapture goes, as it continues to rise, we are continuing to have, it just hits us harder and harder every year. And I still don't think that, that the people in this district really understand how devastating this is about to be for us. We are heading straight for a cliff. And, you know, Yoram's talking about fund balance, we've been very good about using our fund balance and being able to leverage our fund balance, because we have smart people who are setting this up and have done so for the past 10 years, planned for these events, but we are at the end of our planning around this, and we are about to start, I foresee, we're about to start entering into a situation where we're, we're out of dollars. We're out of money, we don't have anything in fund balance to leverage, we don't have any other, we can't keep robbing Peter to pay Paul, which is basically what we're going to have to look at doing next year. People in this community need to wake up and realize what is about to happen. That's the end of my editorial comment.
Randy, in the, in your presentation, you talk about, I'm just following up on Tammy's comment about the commitment to equity increment. So I think those are programmatic dollars, 1.7 million. Were there some other spending categories that relate to that initiative that might not be specifically called out in the same programmatic way? Are there other, like in professional development, or any other categories that if we were to look at those, would be a complement on top of that 1.7?
So are you asking, were there any other budget increases that are not included in one of these goals?
So are there other budget increases related to commitment to equity that are not specifically called out as such?
Okay, so all the budget increases that we had, we pretty much put in one of these categories. And so I guess it comes down to what we define as the commitment to equity. If some of these other categories... If some of these other categories could also fall into that area. So for example, if some of the special ed could also go into commitment to equity or...
Where did the social workers go?
They were in the committee. They were in that 783,000 number.
So what I'm afraid, Missy, is there are not other monies that were awarded but tagged something else. It's either in that 1.7 or it's not being done. .3%.
So those are incremental monies?
Yes.
If we were to look at what we were already spending in that same initiative, would you have a ballpark figure?
I would not. I couldn't give you that off the top of my head. But yeah, those are incremental. That's exactly right.
So in order to answer the question that Tammy posed about, you know, where our priorities are and so forth. Could we later, could you figure out, you know, if we pooled together all of our spending in this commitment to equity effort? Could you give us an idea of what that looks like?
Yes, we sure could. Yeah, we'll pull that and we'll send that out.
Okay.
I think my recollection from the previous years, we only added about nine or 10 FTEs that were spread out among all of these very challenged schools. So the dollar value is not impressive. And that's why it's so important in terms of the District of Innovation, allowing us to be able to change our student-teacher ratios. If you have a class, it's a very homogeneous set of children. They're very much at the same exact point in their map assessment. To be able to take resources and move them where it won't diminish the education of the first set of children, but will dramatically help the second set of children.
So I'm thinking about, like, how would we count this? Like in our professional development arena, we're doing a lot of training of teachers and so forth. How do we count that? How do we count, you know, the heart of a scholar training and the staff time associated with that? I'm wondering if those things that matter are sort of hidden and we're not like specifically saying, oh, this is related to this initiative.
I think that's going to be a team effort to go in and try to find those pieces and compile what that total cost is, but we're happy to do that.
All right. But I certainly would ask that, for example, instructional specialists. I used to think, oh, that was an upside to our challenged schools, but no, all elementaries have instructional specialists. So if this is training that all staff partakes of, then it's nothing special or different. I really would, I would challenge you to make sure you are looking at things that are truly incremental, helping these more challenged schools. Not the same material or instruction that we pass out to all 44 elementaries, not just the 25% that are really struggling.
But I'm also thinking, Tammy, about, you know, what we're doing with Advanced Academics and the research that we did with Google Foundation at secondary especially. I mean, those things matter at secondary too to me that, like, a lot of our teachers are getting that training because it's a culture that we're trying to change. And so I count that. It's not just, you know, specifically for a school of challenge because we have kids that meet this criteria all over the place. So I also count that in the same category. But I'll let you guys, you know, study that. Because I'd like to, I mean, I know you feel this way and I just want to get my arms around, how big of a number are we talking about and what all can we put in this category? Because I know from initiative point of view, you've talked about incorporating extracurriculars next year and so forth, so into this commitment. Let's just get our arms around it.
We sure will. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, board members, do you have any other questions or, okay, thank you. I will now welcome any audience members who wish to speak at this time. If you choose to speak, please do so over here at this podium to my right. And with no one wishing to speak, I will now close the public hearing. All right, so having heard the presentation, having conducted a public hearing, we'll now consider the adoption of the 2018-19 General Fund Debt Service and Food Service budgets. We received that presentation?
Yes. So if you will, again, go back to page nine in your book. And this is the proposed combined budget for the General Fund, the Food Service Fund and the Debt Service Fund. This is also the level that you're required to adopt the budget at, which is the total revenues by category. And then also the expenditures at the functional level. And so this budget is administration's recommendation to adopt. I would like to thank everyone that's been involved in this process and cabinet and budget directors. And of course, the finance and budget department, HR, everybody's worked really hard to try to tighten this budget up and get things accounted for as properly and accurately as we can. And so it's been a long process, but we appreciate the board's patience. And we've also worked with you for several months to try to get this budget where it currently is. And so we appreciate everyone's effort. And with that, it's the administrative recommendation that we adopt the 18-19 General Fund Debt Service Fund Food Service or Food and Nutritional Service Budget as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the 2018-19 General Fund Debt Service Fund and Food and Nutritional Service Fund budgets as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now, we have reached items for discussion and action. First item is a recommendation to rescind the notice of proposed termination. Closure required. Dr. Brockman will introduce the discussion of the rescind notice of proposed termination. Dr. Brockman.
Good evening and thank you. Administration is recommending board consider and act upon the recommendation of the superintendent to rescind the notice of proposed termination of a term contract teacher.
All right. You've received materials previously. Do I have a motion to approve the rescind notice of proposed termination?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Over the summertime, there are additional hires that must take place. And this item relates to providing authority to hire professional employment positions. Dr. Brockman.
Thank you. As you saw this evening with a number of administrative appointments that we brought for your consideration. Hiring is in full swing and many of those hires will have a domino impact. A vacancy becomes filled and produces another vacancy. We're asking for your consideration to authorize the superintendent to hire for all professional positions between now and the first regularly scheduled board meeting in August. The way we envision that working is Ms. Bonzer would notify the board of the administrator to be appointed. We would then recognize and honor them at the August board meeting. But it would allow us to continue with our timelines and the hiring and the dominos that fall during the summer months.
Do I have a motion to authorize the superintendent to hire for all professional positions between June 12 and the first regularly scheduled meeting in August 2018?
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a student learning report from COMMIT Educational Partnership. Superintendent Sarah Bonzer will introduce the discussion of the student learning report from COMMIT, the Educational Partnership. Ms. Bonzer.
Thank you, President Bender. I'm pleased to welcome the team representing the COMMIT organization. COMMIT is an organization that works in the Dallas-Fort Worth area and beyond to help ensure that all the FW students receive an excellent and equitable education that prepares them to flourish from cradle to college. Plano ISD has brought the team tonight to share some of the data that is relevant to our school improvement efforts as well as to discuss how they partner with districts in key areas to support student achievement. In the past months, we have been learning from COMMIT. And we have had the opportunity to study our data and the data of other districts and around the state. We've attended site visits to schools that are showing innovative practices that we can learn from in our commitment to equity. And we are beginning to study a quality indicator system for outcomes for ensuring continued high levels of learning for all students in Plano ISD. So I'm happy to introduce Todd Williams. Todd is the founding chairman and CEO and president of the COMMIT partnership. And he will introduce the team that he's brought with him tonight. Thanks for being with us, Mr. Williams, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Part of me wants to be a new principal or assistant principal because it feels like a great family culture to be part of. So congratulations to all those leaders. I am here with two of my colleagues, Garrett Landry and Kim Mans. I'm going to spend just a little bit of time just explaining a little bit more about COMMIT, what COMMIT is. And then I'm going to turn it over to them to talk specifically about a couple of areas where we've had conversations about potentially working together than answering any questions that you might have. COMMIT was founded about six years ago. It's funded primarily by foundations, corporations, high net worth philanthropists. We work in partnership with all school districts. We charge no fees for anything that we do. We're effectively a consultant, advisor, resource at call as needed by school districts who would like our help and assistance. As you can see here, we start off at our primary focus being Dallas County. We have since then expanded that scope to now be partners with Fort Worth ISD, Arlington ISD, Crowley ISD, and obviously have had conversations with Plano. Our ultimate scope, depending on the need, will be districts who want to work with us within the greater Dallas-Fort Worth region. We measure these 11 indicators across the top based on data, based on expertise, community involvement, research. We start with pre-K enrollment and we go all the way to the number of students who are graduating with some type of post-secondary credential. And we try to align ourselves, as you can see at the bottom, with the state's goal, which is 60 by 30 in terms of post-secondary attainment by the year 2030. We have three primary work streams based on what the data and expertise is telling us. And we brand each of these. The first one's called Early Matters Dallas, True North Goal of Third Grade Reading. Best in Class, which is about educator pipelines, both principals as well as teachers. And then the Dallas County Promise, which is an effort to really significantly increase post-secondary readiness attainment and within the Dallas County region, working with UNTD, Dallas County Community College, et cetera. The interesting thing to note, and it gets ties back into the school finance discussion. There are several entities like us across the state that we are heavily involved with. You can see where those entities are in San Antonio, in central Texas, in the Rio Grande Valley, et cetera. COMMIT provides data to each of those other backbone organizations, to many of them, because we think it's important that we all try and speak with the same voice, using the same data. So when it comes time to advocate for impactful policies in Austin, that we are aligned and coalesce together. You can see that even though Texas is 254 counties, the 13 counties associated with these backbones educate 52% of the kids in Texas. And more importantly, probably represent 60 to 65% of the legislators on the education committees in the Senate and the House. And I've gotten, as someone who's sitting on the State School Finance Commission for the last five months, that I think is going to be incredibly and increasingly important to our work. And we're very much, as you can see at the bottom, also trying to align all those backbone organizations with state organizations, whether it be Metro Eight or the Metro Eight superintendents, T-GAC, Children at Risk, Raise Your Hand Texas, et cetera. Because as we approach the next session in terms of school finance, we think the more voices we have that are aligned and speaking in the same voice about the critical issues facing public schools today will be really important and impactful when it gets to the 2019 session. And then I'm going to turn it over here to Garrett and then we'll go from there.
So as Todd mentioned, we focus on the 11 key indicators that you saw on that first slide. And this is a snapshot of, starting with Dallas County, and just the progress that the partnership has made to date since the founding of COMMIT. So you can see about 37,000 more students meeting key benchmarks across those 11 indicators. But you can see there's still significant ways to go, particularly looking at our pre-K enrollment of three and four-year-olds, our third grade reading being at 40%. And I think what you'll notice is wherever we are at third grade reading, you do not see achievement really peak above third grade reading for the rest of your academic career. One other important thing to note about all of our statistics is that everything we look at is at the MEAT standard or the post-secondary standard. We don't put that much weight on approaches since in many subjects you can get less than 50% of the questions correct and still be considered passing. So this is all at the post-secondary level. What does this look like for Collin County? You can see these are the same 11 indicators. The dotted line is where the state average is on those indicators. So this is just a snapshot of what that looks like. Obviously, we have not spent time actively working in Collin County to date. But you can see there are certainly much higher numbers compared to Dallas County and exceeding the state in almost every indicator. And so moving into our first key initiative, Kim is going to talk about Early Matters Dallas and then I will come back to talk about Best in Class.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Mans and I am the Managing Director of Early Matters Dallas. I am very excited to be here today because although I live in Dallas now, I was born and raised in Plano, Texas. So excited about the opportunity to potentially partner with you all. So Early Matters Dallas is COMMIT's early childhood initiative. We work with over 150 partners to collaborate around two main goals. One, to ensure that 80% of children are kindergarten-ready by 2025. And the second, to ensure that 60% of children are reading at a MEAT state, at a MEAT standard rate for the state by 2025. So we do this by looking at five key levers. The first is to increase access to early childhood education. The second is to improve the quality of early childhood education. The third is to ensure that parents understand the importance of early childhood and they're demanding it. The fourth is to extend the continuum of care beyond just the classroom, but also thinking about key areas such as summer school, after-school programs and parent engagement. And the last is to ensure that there's sufficient public and private resources to meet the needs of those four key levers. So this is just a snapshot of all the different systems that we work with throughout the county to meet those two goals, ranging from hospitals to childcare homes to pre-K and in the classroom. And below are the different initiatives that we work on with our key partners. So today, I'm just going to focus specifically on our pre-K awareness campaign. The reason that we focus on pre-K is we know based on data in Dallas County that children that attend quality pre-K are two times as likely to be ready for kindergarten. And children that are ready for kindergarten are three times as likely to read at the MEAT state standard. So why does this matter for Plano ISD? Plano overall, as Garrett mentioned, is doing well with third grade reading scores. But where there's the biggest opportunity is the difference between economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged students. So non-economically disadvantaged students are reading at 72%. And economically disadvantaged students are reading at about 33% MEAT state standard. And so we know that about out of those 1,600 children that aren't meeting state standards, about half of them are eligible for free pre-K. So Early Matters Dallas has been partnering with our school districts, our current partners, to increase enrollment in pre-K. And so you can see by this graph that we have seen an increase in three and four-year-old enrollment over the past six years of seven percentage points. And how this looks for Plano ISD is that it's actually gone up slightly in the past 16, 17 school year. But it's decreased by about eight percentage points since 2011 and 12. And so if we were to partner with you, we'd like to help dig into why you might be seeing this decrease and share with you strategies that are working with other school, with some of our other school districts.
Can I stop you right there?
Yep.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think the reason behind that is because of our, we had three-year-old program that we could no longer afford to do, correct? And...
Well, the state didn't fund it.
Yeah, the state didn't fund it, so we had to get rid of it. I mean, that's the reason why our numbers are down since 2011 and 12. And then the uptick in the last year is because we've increased our pre-K, or we have the early pre-K program now.
Okay, awesome. So one of the areas that we've been working on with school districts is the partnerships for three-year-olds. And so I don't know if you all have that here, but that might be an opportunity as well for an increase in three-year-old enrollment, but...
Yeah, I, believe me, I want to know what the opportunities are to increase it. I just was telling you, I think that's probably the background.
Okay, awesome. And so as you can look at just this next slide, this shows our partner districts that have been working with us to increase pre-K enrollment. The ones in blue have been increasing. Those are our partner districts. And we have seen a slight decrease in our non-partner districts. And so we know some of the strategies that we've been working on, such as our pre-K campaign and partnerships, have been working for those districts.
Just to interject, one of the things that we did do last year is we voted as a board to support full-day pre-K for all income-eligible children regardless of state support.
Oh, wow.
That may be one of the areas, Missy, where we need to sort of give ourselves credit.
Count credit for that.
But we're very proud of that opportunity. And actually, later in this agenda, most hopefully, my colleagues and I will vote to approve the construction contract for our fourth early childhood, which will be built in the southwest quadrant of our district, which has been very underserved. The fact that parents didn't have full day, they couldn't put their kids in our pre-K. It didn't work for them.
Yep. We do see a lot of that. It's about the schedule and being able to offer full-day... Yep. We do see a lot of that. It's about the schedule and being able to offer full day. So see that all across the region. And so just for a little bit of background on the pre-K enrollment campaign, it started out pretty small with two districts, with Grand Prairie and Dallas DISD deciding to come together and enroll in a common enrollment week, because they felt like it was inefficient to try to reach parents separately, because it was a lot of the same messages and reaching some of the same communities. And so they aligned to a common enrollment week and marketing. Now, since 2014, that's grown from two districts to now 15 districts pulling over $137,000 to buy joint media. And so how this specifically works, just to give you an example of how we partner with school districts, we work to create shared messaging. So we hear from parents' concerns, such as the ability to not have full day or to be a little bit scared about sending their child to school so early, or even concerns such as being bullied at school. We hear all those concerns from parents, and we create messaging for school districts that they can then use as advertisement on the radio, TV, social media, and PR. After parents learn about pre-K and are aware of it, then we provide two tools. One is a regional website where parents can just go in, log in their address, and then find the nearest pre-K to them. And then also, a text messaging platform, which allows parents to follow up with additional questions. So this is just one of the examples of the type of work that we're doing with districts, and would love to learn a little bit more about what you're already doing, because it seems like you're already doing a lot, to see how we might partner further. So with that, I will turn it back over to Garrett to talk about our next initiative.
Thank you, Kim. So our Best in Class initiative is our educator effectiveness work. And we really focus on four key levers: attracting talented diverse candidates, preparing them for the classroom, developing their effectiveness over time, and then ultimately retaining the most effective educators. You can see under each of those pillars, all of the specific initiatives that we work on. We have a teachDFW.org marketing campaign, which is really a recruitment tool to attract candidates into the profession, and they can compare district statistics around salary and working conditions, and hear testimonials. We work a lot with educator prep programs on entry into their programs, the data they're presenting, et cetera, and the quality of those programs. But what we really wanted to focus on today is one key initiative that is really covering both the develop and the retain buckets, and that's the Accelerating Campus Excellence Program that you've heard about that has begun in Dallas ISD and has since been replicated in Fort Worth, Garland, and Richardson. One of the things that we do at Commit is highlight best practices, and then work with districts to really expand and to grow these practices into other districts through convenings, through common learning, and through direct support where our expertise would lens to that being appropriate. And so to kind of set the framework, this is a look of the state as a whole, the largest 200 districts, and there's three key things here. As you see, as poverty increases, as you move to the right on the screen, our performance of our economically disadvantaged students decreases, our percentage of teacher turnover increases, and the percentage of brand-new teachers in those campuses increases as well. This is something that we've seen in all of our districts, because when you have systems in place, human capital systems in place, that really do not put incentives into the systems for effective educators to go into high-poverty campuses to teach, you get outcomes like this where you have a higher percentage of beginning teachers and more churn, both at the principal level and the teacher level. And so, beginning in Dallas in 2015, 16, they sought a strategy to insert those incentives into the system. And it involves each of these five core pillars. And you might say that each of these individually don't look all that innovative. However, when they are applied collectively, we've seen just tremendous outcomes. And so the first piece, and it's the most important piece, is effective teachers and principals. ACE is a strategic staffing initiative, which incentivizes the most effective teachers and school leaders in the district to relocate to the highest-need campuses to make sure that your effective educators are in front of the students who need them the very most. There's a strong emphasis on mission and purpose, and really having a collective mission to turn around schools. This is done primarily through financial stipends, around $10,000 per teacher, and around $15,000 per principal, in order to put the incentives into the system. What I would say is that the money, though, according to educators, is really not the most important thing that they focus on. Number one is the quality of the leader that they're going to work with, first and foremost. Second is, they know that they're going with groups of their peers. They're not being asked by their administration to go one or two at a time and say, "Hey, go turn around this school by yourself," right? You're not going to be able to build culture that way, and you're certainly not going to get a school turned around that way. The second bucket there is instructional excellence, so really strong focus on professional learning communities, data analysis, strong professional development that is really geared towards the specific needs of educators across those campuses. There's an extended learning component at all ACE campuses, and this really takes two forms. One is an extended hour in the school day. Most often, it is for block scheduling for reading and math throughout the day, and then also buildings stay open until 6:00 PM, providing enrichment for all students every day, transportation after school, serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And we've seen a lot of really innovative approaches that campuses have taken. Some ACE campuses in Fort Worth have a laundromat on campus, so for families who don't have access to washers and dryers, they can take care of that at school. And really just thinking about how are we building these campuses around the community needs. There's a heavy emphasis on social and emotional support. And then, like we just talked about, parent-community partnerships are key for these campuses to be successful. And so I wanted to quickly just show you some of the results that we have seen, and then we will close for questions. This is looking at the very first cohort of Dallas ISD. So these campuses just finished their third year in the ACE program, and you can see the growth that they've had in this example is fifth-grade reading. You've seen 38, 40-point gains in fifth-grade reading. Take a look at the bottom there, 92% economically disadvantaged students. What's really important to remember with these ACE campuses, none of the kids changed. These are the same exact kids that were in there three years ago that are in there today, yet their outcomes are dramatically different, because the school leaders and the teachers in front of them have changed. We see on the math side, you see 67, 48-point gains. Blanton Elementary School has 82% of students at the MEAT standard in fifth-grade math. That is higher than elementary schools in Highland Park ISD that has zero economically disadvantaged students. Poverty is not a determining factor for the outcomes that our kids can achieve. It really is about the supports and the instructional opportunities that are put in front of them. What does this look like for the schools that are just in their very first year, just finishing up in Dallas? We see 23, 21-point gains for schools that are under consideration to be closed under state law. It looks, all indications look like none of these campuses will have to close, because they will all meet standard this year, in just one year. What does it look like in middle school? At the secondary level, we've seen 13 and 32-point increases in one year in eighth-grade reading and in eighth-grade math. And so also wanted to show that this is not just success in Dallas ISD. If you look at Fort Worth ISD, that is in there finishing up their very first year. If you look at those percent change since 2017, you can see that the leadership academies, which are the ACE campuses in Fort Worth ISD, are outperforming the district in every content and every grade level, and in most cases, by significant margins. So that is one of the initiatives that we have seen. It's going to be in four districts in North Texas next year, and then there are another four to six districts, both in the region and across the state, actively planning to implement in 2019, 2020 school year. We will not, you have the data here for the Dallas County Promise. That's probably less relevant to Plano ISD at this current time, so feel free to go through those materials, and we're always available for questions. But I guess we'll just close now and open up to questions from the board, and thank you all very much for your time.
I just want to thank you so much for the work you all do. I've been a fan of Commit for, I think, your entire life, six or seven years, a fan of Todd Williams for that same amount of time. And the gains you're making for the children who are living in the most challenged is just amazing and wonderful. I couldn't echo more of your ideas that the right principal makes a huge difference. You can be a very high-achieving principal in a very homogeneous school and transfer to a challenged school, and you may not have the right skills at all. So I think looking very carefully at who we put in front of these schools is very important. So thank you for the work. I look forward to the fact that we can partner with you.
Can you talk a little bit about what you've learned about the incremental cost on a per-student basis for implementing some of these, like the ACE program, that you've had experience with? Can you address that a little bit?
So ACE, across the four districts, we're seeing it's about $1,300 additional per student. That comes out at a campus level, so we've seen as low as around $750,000 to just around $1 million per campus. It is a significant investment. I would say about 60% of that investment is in stipends, as you are incentivizing every instructional level on that campus. But you're also investing in professional, high-quality professional development, transportation costs, after-school enrichment. So there are a number of costs, but we have seen that the outcomes are far exceeding the return on the investment that you're initially making.
So in your experience, how have you, what approaches have you seen districts take in order to find the money?
Yep. It has been a number of approaches, and I would say, I don't think any of them have come by it easily in this environment. Some districts, what I would say is, all districts have funded them out of their general fund. They have found the money to fund out of the general fund. That has taken forms of prioritizing expenditures through every department and basically saying, "What are we, as a district, going to say is our top priorities?" And moving money to fund those specific strategies. We have seen districts look at class size ratios. That has freed up a significant amount of money by changing the ratios by one or two students. We have seen also doing comprehensive reviews of existing professional development contracts that oftentimes don't have measurable outcomes. So taking a look at what are we spending our money on service-wise, and what are we able to actually measure, is showing outcomes for students. And then there's obviously, there's a handful of other things that districts have done that are, you know, not as common.
What do you think the sustainability is when you talk about 1,300 per student as a cost? And is there a point in time where that investment is no longer needed because you've got the people in the right place?
So ACE is a three-year program. So when you think about funding that program, what our districts that are doing this have done is they have basically budgeted out the money for each of the three years, so that you know it is fully funded. The last thing you want to do is identify teachers to relocate to campuses, say that there's incentives in the system, and then after year two, say, "Oh, we don't have the money to do that." So our districts, they have funded it for three years. What we have found is that after the three years, you have changed the dynamic of the campus, both from an outcomes perspective, but also from a human capital perspective, to where those campuses are now easier to hire too, because they're higher performing, so you're able to get more qualified applicants into those campuses. You have systems in place to where kids that are entering into the system know the routines and the practices of every classroom, so there's less churn, and you just have much more smooth transitions from year to year.
I guess I would say also, you know, the famous phrase, "Culture eats strategy for lunch." If you can change the culture of a school, it makes a huge difference. And what we've also seen is that the natural question is, what happens to the campuses that contributed to teachers? And what we have seen, we have just generally seen not much differentiation at all in terms of academic performance at all. In fact, in many of the DISD schools, academic performance continued to increase even after they contributed. You want to put a cap on the number of teachers that any one school contributes, but I think great schools, great cultures can find people to come in to them. It's how do you recruit people to schools that have more challenges, a history of churn in principals, a lot of beginning teachers, et cetera, which, you know, you're trying to change that perspective.
Are you seeing an increase in parent involvement in these campuses?
So that's one of the key, under that parent-community partnership, it's one of the key components. Oftentimes, a lot of these campuses don't even have existing PTAs or SBDMs at all. So districts have taken really innovative approaches to work with either a council of PTAs or a like entity, to say, "What can we build around each of these campuses that are going to be in the ACE initiative?" To have a very, very focus, a big focus on creating strong parent organizations, strong community organizations that's supported by the central level of the district, to make sure that that's a key component, because it is incredibly important for those kids to have the most nurturing environment. What I would say is ACE is really focused on the whole child. It is doing everything a district can do to ensure that kids can just focus on enrichment and learning and enjoying their school experience in the best way they can.
In Dallas, they've been implementing, they've implemented this for three years, and they funded it for three years. So now that that concludes at these campuses, are there now new campuses that have been identified with funding shifting now over to them, those new campuses?
So Dallas started with the first cohort of seven schools in 2015. They launched a second cohort of six schools in 2017, and they're launching a third cohort of another six schools in the 2018, 19 school year, next school year. Now, the first cohort will roll off, because that'll be the end of their third year this year. There still is some support remaining and some additional leadership positions, some transitional stipends for some lead teachers to ensure that that's a smooth transition. But a brunt of that cost is now being shifted into funding the second and third cohort.
And that'll be part of the continuous improvement process, is what is that, what happens to those campuses in year four? How many teachers who moved, stayed versus leave? And so again, this is just a process that you're trying to work through it and basically figure out what's the right mix. Maybe at some point in the future, those stipends aren't $10,000, but maybe they're four. You know, it's all about, it's all about what is the right. I have to continuing to tweak and look at those different models to see what is the best risk reward.
So you customize the programs for the individual schools, and in doing so, there may be ways to kind of manage costs. Is that right?
I think we're trying to keep the fidelity of the model in year one and two. And then as districts like DISD and others who've been through those processes, look at what, so for example, this cohort three in Dallas ISD, it's not going to be universally all ACE teachers. It's going to be primarily instructional coaches and some other, so I think it's, part of it was budget, and part of it is also just trying to tweak the model to understand what's the right combination of dollars spent versus outcomes.
So I'm interested if you've seen any efficiencies created on the backend. You probably just don't have the data yet, because it's still such a new program. If you are essentially spending upfront to create efficiencies on the backend. And the whole point of that question is, you heard us talk about robbing Peter to pay Paul. We just adopted a negative budget.
Yep.
And so that's part of what we're looking for.
Sure.
We just finished a report with Bain, which did a big analysis of the principal pipeline across the region, and the cost of a turnover for one principal is $70,000 to a district. So many of these ACE campuses have a new principal every year. Four principals in four years, five principals in six years. That's like, every time you do that, that's an inherent cost, right? So if I'm going to provide a $10,000 stipend to teachers, that's seven teachers for the cost of just turning over one principal, and then multiply that out five, six years in a row. Certainly already seeing that, but you're right, I think you're going to see a lot of remediation costs, a lot of probably being able, especially in the early grades, to identify special needs earlier to where you're not having those costs later in your elementary and secondary career.
To me, that seems like the, notwithstanding the personal aspect of educating children, but from a business perspective, which is one of the things we have to look at, if you can spend upfront to get kids kindergarten-ready, and then you avoid the remediation cost you're talking about, and turnover cost, and then that creates a culture change where you're avoiding teacher turnover cost, then, you know, I could see where there is some, on the backend, dividends paid later on.
There's been tremendous testimony in the state School Finance Commission for the last five months, and I think we've crossed the bridge, you know, knock on wood. I think people get it, right? The data is just so overwhelmingly compelling about the benefits of pre-K and kindergarten readiness on third-grade reading. And as a state, only 45% of our kids are meeting the state standard of third-grade reading statewide, and it's only in the 30s for low-income kids, and low-income kids are six in 10 kids in Texas.
Right.
So it is just amazingly compelling to try and do that. And if you think about a really strong teacher, you need a really strong teacher if you've got kids coming in who read in second grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, all in the same grade, right? It's just the level of differentiation required for kids who don't come all at the same level, and we don't have an intense focus to make sure that every kid by third grade can read, creates a lot of churn and issues and stress and burnout for teachers later on because of that differentiation coming within a grade.
I would say sadly that the legislators that represent me are not fans of early childhood, and they don't think it's effective. So hopefully, you can continue to change some of those hearts and minds with your data. They seem to not see it at times. A more specific question I would ask in terms of the $1,300 per child, do you have some pro forma in terms of how many teachers versus support professionals versus family liaison, social workers it takes? Because we have a number of challenged schools that I think they've had great culture, and in the past, they've had great leadership, but they have just been used to their last ounce. And so how would you suggest we go about even constructing the workforce for some of these schools?
Yeah, so that number is averaged around a staff of probably about 40 teachers and 60 staff. ACE intentionally over-hires above formula for leadership. So most of the campuses have an additional assistant principal. All of them have an additional counselor. They all have, in Dallas, what are called academic facilitators. In Fort Worth, they're called, I think they're called instructional leaders. They all have additional centralized instructional leaders, so those are central administration instructional coaches. So there is a heavy investment in the instructional supports and the counseling supports on those campuses, given the needs and the challenges of the campuses. So you're absolutely right. You do invest more than a comprehensive school that might be a less challenging circumstance.
I would love to see some of those numbers, some of those staffing models, so we can start... start to understand...
We have them broken up by every campus, so it'd be helpful.
Will they also include, like, social workers?
We don't break them, I can, I can ask the districts back for that.
Okay. That would be a great help. Thank you.
So before us this evening is a partnership agreement that we have in order to enter into a no-cost partnership agreement with Commit. It's amazing that we can have management consulting fees for free. So, Ms. Bonzer, can you describe for us what you would like to receive from this relationship before we undertake a vote?
Well, I think the opportunity for us to go into what I would consider a planning year of continued conversation around our commitment to equity efforts by being able to look at other districts that are doing important work, that are getting results, that we might be able to learn from, models that we could study, you know, Tammy, you know, the staffing model, or the, you know, how do we get kids recruited into pre-K? I think there's a lot for us to be able to, to look at and consider as we're developing our plans for the future of meeting all the needs of all of our kids across Plano ISD. And so, I just look at this as an opportunity to engage with not only the Commit folks and professionals, but also with other districts that are trying to endeavor to take on some of the same work, and some are a little bit ahead of us, and some are a little bit alongside of us, and maybe some a little bit behind, but we can all learn from each other on how to serve our kids better. And so, I'm interested in entering into that conversation as a district.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Commit Educational Partnership Agreement? I move that we approve the non-binary letter of intent with Commit.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks so much. Thank you for being here.
And thank you for having patience with us, as it took us a while to get to this point.
You want to run your butt?
Maybe you can help us with our legislative priorities.
Take some of that back, Todd.
Actually, get rid of recapture, if that would help.
Before we begin the class rank discussion, it's a little after nine o'clock. We've been here for a couple of hours. I think we could take a few-minute break. Let's be back here, please, at 9:20.